Now.
You got the minutes for the.
From the other one?
Yeah.
I call. What should I call this, the budget approval meeting? Call the budget approval meeting together. And I'd like to read the minutes from the September the 12th budget introduction meeting. Being called to order six forty-five, me and Kathy were here. Nobody else was around, no visitors or anything. Council met for the public hearing on the upcoming twenty twenty-five town budget after no petitions were offered by the public. In objection to the budget, council brought his stroke, motion to adjourn hearing at six fifty-five P M. And council Kathy Campbell seconds, two lies. So we've introduced it. Uh, you probably haven't had a chance.
I have not.
And this was the. How did you decide?
That's why I asked her, but he wouldn't hear it.
Yeah.
The minutes.
Um, last week.
For the budget.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Not only last month.
That's the minutes.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
I had to add it. She's there, get it back. Turn it up.
It's time to read.
It's your turn.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow. She's had a rough way down. Yeah.
When you meet your neighbors, they're always good to. I didn't hear that.
Choke down water.
What we're doing now is we're approving the budget.
You're adopting it.
Adopting.
This is gonna cover everything?
It is or it ain't, you know, who won't know till we get into it and start spending and see what breaks.
Right.
As long as the taxpayers pay their part, you're okay.
That's all.
Yeah, we might have to chip in. A couple of years ago, we each had to kick in a couple hundred dollars. They just give it to me and I have.
Me, we both read the budget, I'll make the motion that we approve the budget.
We're gonna send it out.
Motion been made properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say aze. Thank you. Motion carried. Along with that, I'd like to make another motion, I'm making a motion with adjourn this meeting.
I'll say it then.
Motion been made properly seconded during the meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
In, Jerry, let's go. Go ahead and call the meeting door.
You got a chance.
I was reading it.
Till I.
I didn't.
One night over me.
Yeah.
I didn't get read all that.
You said that?
Did you ever get a deposit yet? Alright, anybody got any questions?
I guess it is.
About last month's minutes?
Yeah. I was wondering how the poker run that for.
There was a lot of them. Oh, what's a lot?
Uh, I didn't, I didn't count, I stayed here too late.
Yeah, we'll take the sheets off.
So it went well, though?
Oh, yeah, I mean, everybody had a good time, everybody got food to eat.
No issues with the block in the streets and everything?
No.
Guess they're getting a salt dog ready.
Gotcha.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna mount that on the old dump trailer for him, is that what I heard?
No, that's putting back on the old rack. The salt dog could be back on the flatbed.
Okay. What, are they gonna put the leaf shaker on?
The suckers going on there will back on the old trailer.
That'd probably make it easier for them. And I seen the speed humps, the speed humps got put back in. So that's why I said actually about the trailer, working good then.
Alright, I'm glad to hear that.
You don't try to leave that.
Yes, same as it always did.
Ready to stay on there.
Extract the east side of that.
I think. There's some stripes on it.
Yeah, there's stripes on it.
I see stripes on it, yeah.
Unless they do them today, they do them today?
They must have, because there were stripes on it.
Yeah, I think there was stripes on it when I went across the fire truck.
I just came across it earlier today, it's striped.
Uh, and we just have the one side, we have one coming from the south.
Both sides.
Just from north?
North and south.
Oh, you do, is north, I've never come from south. Because that comes faster than that color.
You can't get blurred. I understand they're wanting more of these on some of the other streets?
Well, if we get professional, yeah, Green needs them, uh, North Main needs them, I'm sure.
Okay, so we need to be ordering signs first.
Yeah.
Like to have the signs first.
We have big barrels. Those barrels work just as good as the signs really work.
They work better.
Yeah, because they're a little more obvious.
Yeah, but we've only got so many.
There's a bunch in town now, man, if we kept a few of them.
So which street you gonna do next?
Which we will, we'll let, we'll let them know which one we want.
Don't look at me.
I thought, I would.
What we wanna do?
Probably North Main thirty-eight or Main all the way there. Because they're flying through there, they go right, run that outside, grab them there, we'll start rolling north.
Yeah, I think that was the next one, I really like the signs ahead of time. Is there any way we can get them cheaper, I know you had a trailer the last time.
I think I'm the best, it ain't nothing.
Well, I mean, those are good signs, that last.
Well, you gotta, you gotta have, if you're gonna put a sign up, it's gotta be D O T. Yeah, so we've gotta make sure it's got the right reflective material on it.
What's the sign, what's the sign?
What we can do, then we know where they'll need something. I can get a hold of the county and the next time they make a large order, they can just throw ours in.
And that might be cheap to get more.
Might, maybe, that might be two years down the road, though.
No, I think they order every once or twice a year.
Oh, do they?
Because I had talked to her a couple of months ago, and they had just ordered.
We had to replace the rear end top, too.
Yeah, they're gonna be old.
It's falling on the side.
Keep looking, you live.
So it's up now?
I don't think it was stolen, I think it was just set free.
Well, whatever it was.
Yeah, it was taken from its captain.
It was gone. Oh, I know, I don't know.
Yeah, you gotta have breakaway posts.
And you're pretty fast.
Just depends on what.
Yeah, that's.
Whether we're mounting a sidewalk or what's happening.
So we had to mount these sidewalks down there.
Are you going to ask the county if they can do breakaway posts for the chair?
Yeah, that's what they use, they use the same.
That's what they use, they have to use the same thing.
So you think they're asking?
Well, yeah, we do.
Begging of course.
Whenever they get ready, I'll find out when they're gonna order, we'll get our order together and just have her put it in.
So maybe he's putting in like one, one of, just, uh, just north of thirty-eight going northbound, then one up there.
Probably two, I would think.
One on this side of the alley.
Exactly. I'd say one right past Hart Street and one right before Hart Street. Should snow down around that, the cell phone dropped down.
Oh, well, if it's already burning, you got a sack of cheese.
It's on the sidewalk.
Yeah, you can have one sidewalk, but that probably will mess up your friend's parking spot when they get these sidewalks done. And I'm gonna task you to let him know that he's not gonna, probably not gonna be able to park that big old trailer he parks over there. Where Dove Dad used to live a long time. And if you let him park there, you could not.
Because that sidewalk's got tore up, those steps got tore up.
He won't be able to pull over these.
Anything else, sir?
Especially if he's not gonna be able to pull over.
Uh, are you gonna have officers working on the night of Halloween?
Oh, yeah, I work every Halloween.
Well, I'm a little bit more concerned about it than I normally would have been because of the extra construction, and that might. Too.
Yeah.
All the extra traffic. Because it's being diverted off of thirty-five, because apparently that's close to a little bit, too.
I'll be out that night, so, and I usually park the car, so you see red and blues as soon as you come into town either direction, so.
Okay, so how many, how many's gonna be working?
Probably just me, because Ron does Louisville, and, uh, I can check with the other guys to see if they're available or not.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be nice to get a couple that night, because.
For keepsake.
Yeah, well, that and with the, with this whole mess here, I was really concerned, because that's a lot of extra traffic.
Well, the good news is they can only go one direction at a time, so.
It's a pretty substantial haul up there, too, right now. I think so. I just tried to get caught up a little bit.
I just tried to get to the fire station, drive around the fire station, you come to Main, then cross Main.
Ron got caught. Can't hardly get in the fire station.
Yeah, I've done the Shinnerville Road.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, oh.
Today it was, too.
Shinnerville Road?
Oh, man.
Well, then here, then you gotta come in the south, the back way.
They're correct, Rick, the bolo, Ron can teach that now.
Yeah, he got his certificate, he's ready to go, anybody want, anybody want to stand out here and we'll try it?
Wes, what you got going on right now?
Nothing. What's the new lady's name next?
Hey.
Elizabeth.
We can have, we can have her demonstrate, you wanna see what it looks like.
That won't hurt Elizabeth if we.
It doesn't hurt.
It doesn't hurt at all. It's not, it's not telling us a use of force.
We wouldn't do that, too.
Really?
Not the first night.
It's a restring, it's a handcuffs.
So as long as they're not moving, it's not gonna hurt them.
It doesn't matter if they are.
It's not gonna hurt them unless it goes around their arms.
Yeah, but I mean, they're gonna.
Could cause a fall, which could hurt them.
But their hands are free.
Hey.
So normally, most people will reactively just brace themselves.
Most.
But. Yeah, it's, the thing, it doesn't matter how high you are, how mental you are, it's not like a taser where if they're jacked up on meth.
It's gonna be useless.
Nothing.
Yeah.
I don't care, you can be as high as you wanna be.
It's still gonna be effective.
It's still a hundred percent effective, it's, the thing is incredible. If you guys wanna see it in action, we can do it real quick.
I'm not sure.
Well, I want you burning up all those.
They're fifty-four dollars a cartridge, so. I got, I got three extra.
Yeah, he got three. We'll, we'll wait till, you know, Kathy's back and everything, because.
Totally good.
Yeah.
We can video it for you.
Well, we don't, since they're, they're expensive.
I got, I got three from the class.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Next meeting, again.
Yeah, so, yeah, we might, you know, have something set up to where we can do it the next meeting, you know.
I've got a question.
Tell people I'll come and watch.
In the class, did they tell you, I mean, is it good for all ages?
It doesn't have any professed warnings like the taser does for, uh, you know, kids or that kind of thing.
Pregnant women?
It's actually better in a S R O school environment to do that than taser kit. Because this doesn't really hurt you at all. All it does is restring you so you can be handcuffed, that's it.
When you go to take it off of them, you just take it loose?
You just take a, a pair of medic shears and you just cut the cord and take it off.
Give us a, a try, Jess.
I'll try anything once.
All you gotta do is stand there.
Yeah. Yeah.
She wants video.
Yeah, we can video once it's done to her, and see.
She'd get more out of it.
Okay, I'm making a motion, we accept the minutes from last month's meeting. Motion been made properly seconded, accept the minutes from last month's meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say aze. Well, he can say it, the minutes don't can't do it.
Not for less.
Parents by citizen, that's you, Jess.
That's ma'am.
Yes, sir.
You're a citizen.
How you going?
You've been calling our words, our.
Go for the beer.
Oh, well, good. Good, 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 good. We don't get a lot of citizens.
I guess unless there's an issue, then of course.
Officer Bush, you're up, sir.
Uh, we, we done the U S Attorney's Conference in Indianapolis. It was pretty good, it was on, uh, drugs, uh, legalizing marijuana is coming. Sooner than most people realize, but it's, it's coming. They promised to talk about that they might do medical first and then go recreational, but everything is drifting that way, so it's, it's gonna be happening here in Indiana. Uh, we got our laptops, uh, got, got them set up, Ron's putting the fingerprint reader on them and the barcode reader on them. So you can scan your driver's license and then use your finger, your fingerprint to open up the, we got a laptop, so. Got a camera at the gazebo, that's watching, so it's, uh, it's doing it out there pretty good. It's, it's active, you, in that early afternoons, it's pretty good. Uh, helping the accident, State Road one, someone was turning, someone behind him wasn't stopping, so. But nobody was hurt, so that was kind of a good thing. Uh, we had training, uh, for firearms and E V O. We actually had the, uh, Hagerstown High School parking lot, uh, actually reserved for us. We, we ended up not using it because of the weather was screwed up that day, because the weather coming in from. That last, that last hurricane, the.
A leak.
A leak, so we ended up not, we ended up not using it, but, uh, we can use their parking lot whenever, uh, we need to, if they don't have something scheduled for it. Uh, had a suicidal subject, took him to Reed. So, oh, so he, he got a, a mental eval, and I think he was released the next day, so. Uh, so the JAG grant, the financial report is complete. The town has reimbursed forty-two thousand five hundred twelve bucks eighty-seven cents. It leaves about ten dollars and thirteen cents unused, which will go back to JAG.
I wonder how you say we need fifty dollars off?
No, that's the Wayne County grant.
Oh, that's the Wayne County grant.
Yeah. Uh, so they said that, uh, we should have it in a couple of weeks, that's, so you can check next week or something. I mean, you'll know when you get a forty-five thousand dollar deposit. Or forty-two thousand, right? Yeah, uh, the Wayne County grant, uh, Anita's got, got the invoices, we've already got all the equipment, got the bolo wrap, A Ds. Uh, one, one of the radios is here, and the other one's still on order.
The two radios are here.
No, one radio, one radio is, one of, one of them's still, still on order, it's a brand new, it's a brand new radio.
Everything else is here.
Yeah. Uh, we got one driver license while suspended, seventeen tickets. Ooh la. So, you, people don't realize how hard it is to spend money, well, the government way at least. It's very, very unsatisfying to have to do that.
So many stipulations, aren't they?
So. But now, if for some reason that you guys wanna go through it again, it's opening up probably by the end of the month. But you wanna get cameras or street signs or radar signs, or, I'm just saying, you guys can think, think about something, but. I mean, me personally, I, I prefer to wait out a year. But we can do it next year, we can, we, we can list the items that you guys truly think that, that the town could use, that would, uh, you know. I was thinking the radar signs, about six, eight of those things.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
And then get one, one that's mobile, where you can move it to different locations.
Yeah.
So that's just something to think about.
We're getting them free, yeah. They're not gonna give us trucks and cars and S U Vs.
Well, can you get cameras to mount on the light bulbs and stuff to get?
Prob, if you, if we came up with a, got a vendor to put up cameras, you know, that would be a project itself.
That'd be twenty-four seven cameras.
Yeah, that's what you really kinda need, is twenty-four seven cameras that report all the time.
Yep.
But what we got now, I mean, it's, it's the best we can do, what we have.
Uh. Question, car, which, which car is which? Car number one, is that the Dodge or is that the, uh, Ford police car?
That's the Crown Vic, I think.
Crown Vic's car, one. Could have to be, because I could, I couldn't drive a Crown Vic with a hundred and seventy-four thousand miles on it.
You said it was seventeen, seventeen gallons?
Yes.
Thousand miles on the Dodge, that's a hundred and seventy-four thousand miles, Dodge got that many on it?
Right, no, that's, that's a typo, should be one seventy, one seventy-five. There's no, there's no, there's no mileage on it for last month. I, that's a typo, I typed that wrong, you know me, buddy, how.
Fat figure.
Wait, wait. Oh, I'll correct that.
I do. I just curious. That's why I wondered if it was the Dodge.
No, yeah.
It's like it, it showed a thousand miles.
Yeah, that's not right, I typed it.
It's supposed to be zero, okay. Okay, that makes more sense now.
Well, I had something else I wanted to add.
Who was G four?
G four is Brian. He didn't get his hours in last month. I told him that that was taboo, so who knows, that, this board's not gonna tolerate, you know, that can't get your hours in. Unless it's something, you know, if you're in a hospital or a coma or something, but other than that, he just had a lot of stuff going on with his business and stuff. He didn't quit.
Guess he can give us double this next month.
Is he, which one works on the Dodge?
Brian.
Brian?
What's where?
Which one works on the?
Brian's.
Well, he's done a lot of work on it.
Yeah, he done about three thousand dollars worth of work on that car.
Yeah.
So. But that can, but that can only carry you so far, though.
Yeah, well, he's, I think he's still, he's still getting hours in, that means for his in-service.
Oh, yeah, uh, he, he's got all those, I believe, but, yeah, that's the good thing about the new law that took effect. Come, come January first, if you don't have all your in-service hours in, you're automatically suspended.
As a.
Police officer.
Reservist or police officer?
Police officer, you are, you are suspended until you get your hours from your training hours, so.
It's not like they require a lot.
C E News, you know what you mean?
Yeah.
I think it's what, like twenty-something on it?
It's, uh.
It's got training.
Twenty, twenty-four hours, plus you got D T and firearms and E V O and, uh, de-escalation, some other, some other stuff that has to be.
Plus the triple digits.
So, yeah, there, here's the deal, there ain't, there's no reason why someone for a whole year can't get all the required training in, and if they don't, then.
Well, especially because we got a guy that probably, he trains most in the required training, don't get wrong.
Yeah. Does, does everything but the D Ts. And, uh, we're getting that, like, uh, I'm going on, you got twenty-six to Shandow High School, or Fort Henry County somewhere. Going over there for a day for, to get my, my four hours for that.
Are you guys taking advantage of any of these ones, stuff?
Uh, I've got that, but we have, when, uh, we go to the, the, the conference and the one in the, in the, in the, the springtime. That covers all of our mandatory training, we didn't need to get the, the physical stuff done, that's where you, but. There, there, there's still plenty of places around the state, Wayne County puts training on, I, monthly.
Yeah.
So there's no reason why guys can't get the training in, that's it. But the good news is, is that the state don't care anymore. Come January first, if you don't have it, you're suspended.
Anybody got anything else they'd like to ask Officer Bush about?
Oh, Tuesday, they're installing the L P Rs.
Well, I think they've got them all, right?
Yeah, we got everything now. Everything, laptop, there, we got, yeah, we got, we got fifty-four thousand, a hundred dollars worth of stuff.
And that's, they're gonna be on both vehicles.
Correct. And then, uh, I talked to Buddy, and, you know, in the near future, we need to, we need to kinda decide how we gonna. Keep, where, where to keep one of them parked at, because you only put one in the garage, so the other one's gotta be parked somewhere, I mean, I can put a, sort of cover on it. But like I said, you got twenty thousand dollars worth of camera system out in the weather, so.
I got an idea, being you said that this, uh, grape was coming back up, can you go back to them now and say, hey, you gave us this forty-two thousand dollars for the L P Rs on them, now we need to protect them. We need thirty-five thousand to build them, to, to build the pole barn.
Yeah, they don't do, they won't do buildings and stuff like that.
You sure?
Yeah. It's, yeah.
Sounds like a.
But, like I said, either or, uh.
We don't have additional garage space anywhere.
No, and what, get, get one of those, uh, you know, the, 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 what they call them, barn, the little carports. That's what I, I got at my house, so we can, see about getting a price on that and see if it's something, something doable next year, maybe.
We should go get a small one for one vehicle.
Yeah, just.
For a hundred thousand dollars, unless it's went up.
How much?
They used to be, you could get it for a hundred thousand.
I don't know, man, my, mine was about almost five thousand dollars.
They used to. Yeah, we looked at it for nine hundred and seven dollars, our beauty go, didn't we?
Well, maybe ducking.
We don't have five thousand in that big one out there, do we?
No.
Well.
These are ones they just built on site on whatever ground you got there, and they just.
Well, wherever you bought that one, if you buy one like that, but just smaller, that'd be perfect.
Yeah.
Just, please, what, you know, try to keep the side on the north side, just to keep the, the windows up, other than that, though.
Get them closed with garage doors on them.
I know.
You wanna make cars to protect the.
Well, you, I mean, if, if you can get that, I'm just talking about, it's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna cost, so.
Yeah, but it's gonna cost less than the, the equipment on the vehicle, so.
Well, the, the equipment on the vehicle would more than the vehicle.
It's forty-two thousand dollars.
It'll be insurance, everything be insurance.
She, they've already got the list of all the L P Rs, laptop, all that, should've been already added to, to our insurance.
It's reasonable.
I was thinking.
Or just a small one, not, not want the, you know, where they're put, set and posted or anything, it's just a.
Is, mine just sits on the ground anchored.
Yeah.
You got sidewalls on yours?
On one side, the, the, the other side's my house.
That's what I could do down there in the back of the, uh, garage, too. We could do something like that or.
But, hey, the side doors, we put that whole lot. Might as well use it for something.
Yeah.
And that way it gets them close to the door here, too. And if we were to do that, we also need to put another key round facing that way, no?
Probably.
Well, yeah, we got the lock.
It's just something to think about, but you don't wanna put it in a flood zone.
Pull it right in there.
You don't want, you don't wanna, you don't wanna put a carport in a flood zone. You got a car parked there, then it rains two or three days, and then, well, then, well, you know what happens.
Yeah.
North Carolina style, that's real, yeah.
Yeah, we probably have to, like, build something up a little bit first, before we get in there. Build it pretty low. Over here.
I'll just put her.
Right here next to the, no, don't come down there and bother me. Stay right up here at the top.
That'd be doable.
Yeah.
We'll start looking around, just kinda getting ideas. I, I just wanted to bring your attention, 'cause we need to do an investment, the town does, at least to
Protect it.
Cover that.
At least not in the budget for next year.
Man, budget's only a, a suggestion, right here.
Shh, shh.
Anybody got anything else for Rick?
Uh, thank you, guys.
I'll make a motion, we accept Rick's, uh, report.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, all the terms in the eye.
All right.
All opposed, say aye. Thank you. Superplanned operation Darlene early.
Flowing?
Flowing.
That's whether last week or so, two weeks ago. Hey, we've had a couple of power outages out there. It's, uh, kicked their handlers out, uh, held them as well.
Just from the land?
Yeah, and then we had a equipment failure, what was it, uh, Friday night? And taped it out. Tipped everything down, generator, it happened to run all night.
So you've got two power outages.
Yeah, we've got several, uh.
When you have the power outage out there, how long does it take before stuff starts getting bad?
Well, hopefully I'd wake up and answer my phone.
I mean, normally, I, I know on these lift stations, it's got a nine-hour window.
We got about the same thing. Well, it just depends on flow. In the middle of the night, we got a lot longer because the flow is not. Not as heavy.
Everybody's sleeping.
So, we don't have as much, but, uh, the problem is when we lose air, we lose treatment, so.
I'm sorry?
When we lose air, we lose treatment.
When you lose air, you lose treatment.
Yes. Certainly, it treats the bad. Just monkey goes out, flips a couple of switches, make sure your handlers don't kick out from a power situation. I tried. Does the generator test it periodically, make sure it's? Runs, it runs once a week.
I bet. Brings up a good thing. We're gonna be a little trading for believers, having, you know, the generator we have in here.
Okay.
Waste water treatment monthly report.
Last month, we took in thirty thousand, um, and we only dispersed, uh, about ten thousand. So far, we've taken in like, maybe three thousand more this year, or we expect the pump goes out, and there it goes. And the first of September, when we told you, Billy, we did have sixteen accounts in the ninety-eight, and the court treasurer had to do six new Surilings in September. Right now, there's, uh, thirty-one outstanding Surilings that need to be paid through the Wayne County Treasurer's Department. You look on your report here, you'll see where we did take in, uh, Suriling payment in June, and that sure helped us. If we hadn't got that, we would've been spending more this year than what we took in. We took in thirty-seven hundred on Surilings. Uh, a lot of work, but it's necessary to do. It's not anything we wanna do, but we have to. When an, an account comes into ninety days, we have to do it. So, right now, we're okay with, uh, what's coming in and going out, but if Doug comes in and says, we got an emergency, our pumps are down, where do we find money?
Nowhere.
We spent fourteen thousand, fourteen thousand dollars on our chemicals. We're gonna do this year. I would've never thought that, uh, twenty thousand dollars in chemicals. Yeah, and we were the cheaper place there, but we were used years ago. Yeah. Yeah, we're fourteen thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-three on chemicals.
But adjust accordingly as we have to.
Yeah.
We've done real good about not having to adjust, or not, been taking chances where I've been doing.
Yeah.
Anybody got anything from, from Anita? I'll make a motion, we accept Anita's utility report.
That's the, uh.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, all the terms say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Okay. Facilities coordinator, don't we?
Got a new trailer. Yeah. The old one's almost back together, so we'll have it geared up for leaf season.
Okay.
So, it's still about making use of it? Oh, yeah.
Is that seven tons? How, how big's that trailer?
The big one or the little?
The big one.
Seven?
The old one was three ton, wasn't it?
Probably, it was a ton, it was thirty-five hundred.
Probably a ton.
Yeah. I think we put, we probably put ten ton.
But it, so the purpose over the years, I mean.
I might take a little easy on that. Well, it'll, it'll, it'll be strictly leaves, and we won't have to tear it down every year.
Okay, oh, that, that's good.
That's gonna help out.
Anybody got anything else they wanna ask Doug about? Normally, when he's not here, we got thousands of questions.
Speed bumps are done?
Speed humps.
Humps, sorry, I got it wrong. Humps are done.
My wife does that. Speed, I mean, humps.
Gonna try here with the next couple of weeks, get up and finish patching the.
You think?
Within the next couple of weeks, patch Maple Street.
Oh, okay.
You think there's any chance, time of year we're in now, uh, maybe get a couple more speed humps at some point, then when you get payrolls up there or something?
I don't know. Depends how we get signs fast enough, I guess.
If you, if you can, we can order some breaker with hose.
Well, they're not gonna do them till they order.
Wow.
Now, wait a minute. Now, those orange, those big orange barrels worked before, and they'll surely work again, so.
Well, Scott said he wanted signs up before.
Okay, well, we'll wait till the third one's here, and we'll have a vote on it, see who wins that. That's the way it's supposed to work. I think it is.
I mean, if we go ahead and kill them, if we.
My thing is, the whole idea behind it is to slow people down so kids don't get killed.
True.
So, when it first come to me, and they said, oh, we're afraid kids are gonna get killed, and they said, oh, they're too high. Well, yeah, we'll do, tear them out and then let the kids get killed? Let's see. I think we're just letting them go, you know?
I think they're gonna work.
Oh, they are. It's definitely slowing down. Yeah, I mean, if the weather permits, and when we got a little extra, especially if you're gonna be patching that seven ton, if you got seven ton in there and you only need five, you got the other two on speed hump.
Hey, Doug, if you talk to the guys with, uh, who's the contractor here?
Millstone.
Millstone, uh, if, if they have some extra, are they gonna be able to finish that road behind the fire department?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm at, to the Millions or whatever?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's good.
Anybody got anything else for Doug?
So, they are gonna be paying three, yeah. Yes.
They're just gonna do it through town, right?
I'm not answering that one.
Not like they did last time, right? Supposedly, yeah. I read a thing.
They are, they're grinding it.
Okay.
Inch and a half.
Yes, they're gonna take an inch and a half out. This was just a spot fix, trying to.
Oh, the paper, they said it said it's gonna grind an inch and a half.
The guy told me three inches.
That was too good.
Curb to curb.
That'd be better.
Yeah, they're not just taking.
Well, when they first looked at this project, remember we all went out there, and it was gonna do it from one to thirty-five?
Yep.
Now, they're just doing it through Greens Fork.
Yeah.
The thirty-eighth.
Are they just, are they gonna do all the sidewalks?
No, just.
At first, they were.
Just the ADA areas now, over there in front of the old bank, and all that, they're gonna have to take all that out, uh.
That's some of those that we did, we'd make, replace some of that sidewalk, and we had to rip the trees out.
Yeah, uh, but.
With the steps.
They had to take that one out on the corner here, his property.
I saw that.
Uh, they had to take that out because they had to rebuild that collection, uh, and then they had to make the curb ADA compliant.
And wasn't there a, uh, storm parade out there right on thirty eighth and side of the bridge, and they were gonna do something?
That's the one they're digging. That's the reason we've got the stop signs. Because they've gotta cut the road out, and they gotta replace that storm dog going across there.
Good.
So, they've replaced one side already.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they replaced this one side over here.
Are you gonna replace the ones that follow in?
Yep.
They're following in.
They're just gonna repair them.
Yeah, that's where they had some of them locked, like they were gonna do things.
They gotta cut it out, and they are gonna repair them. And they're gonna raise them up to road height. Still, it'd be better than what we had before.
Yeah, remember they had talked in the first kind of thing about the apartments, are they bringing that sidewalk up or bringing steps?
They're bringing the sidewalk down.
Down, but then no step for the apartments.
They've cut it out to where they're gonna, it almost looks like they're leaving the step, is what it looks like. They cut it twelve inches in. Yeah. But I told them, I said, if you, if you've been in that foundation of the old hardware, we went in there when they were gonna auction it off. You know, we're liable to be, I'm gonna sit across there and watch the fun because. It's gonna get interesting. It's gonna get real interesting. If they haven't repaired that south wall, which is the entrance into that, you think that center of that building's sagging now? Yeah, just wait. It's gonna kill worse.
Uh, is, are the owner gonna have to get involved in that, or will the state take care of all that for the?
I, I don't, I'm not the guy in charge. I, I do know from just talking with them, they've had nothing but problems. It's been one thing after another. They are trying to do it. You know, and get us, get us something decent that's compliant.
Yeah, I'm off on Friday, so I'm planning on probably talking to them, or just go down, we'll get them a look, come down and have a chat.
Everybody else does. Yeah. I know them. They, they talked to me about the hump in my lot because they had the transition. And I'm going, if, if you guys would've at least if there was a problem with the hump, I don't like the hump there either.
Right.
I said, if that was a problem, I had Danny Davis there with the backhoe, we could've ripped that out.
Yes, he could've ripping up that old light bulb base or whatever it was.
I put that in, 'cause I'm gonna give the kids a Christmas tree. So. That'd be cool. I think it is. Yeah, that'd be cool. Since they cut my electric to it, whatever they done the sawing of the streets. So, that, I had to, uh, kick something into high gear, leather. I got about seven hundred dollars wrapped up in it. 'Cause they didn't know I had an electrical line out there.
I have never seen anything out there that anybody had electric on it too.
Right.
I guess, over the years, the whole time that we had the bar there, I never.
Yeah.
But I was, I tried to get them to put a stoplight in town right in that area, and they They got them now, though.
Kids.
Those are pretty cool, too.
You know, Williamsburg has the four-way stop right there.
Uh-huh.
And Greens Fork is the same size as Williamsburg. Why, that would slow traffic down.
Exactly.
Now, you're gonna have jake breaks coming down the hill.
Yeah.
That's gonna be nice. But if you sit.
The speed signs we have at both ends, they do help, but.
If you sit there, they come through, I mean, you rumble, you.
Oh, yeah.
I hear them here coming through.
No, I mean, you, the ground shakes.
Well, I can hear the big trucks. They get something up here and make a big noise. I can hear the here.
Yeah. I, I've got a collection of hubcaps.
Got a decorate or something.
And, yeah, well, we'll hang them there. But, yeah, I told the kids, I said, we'll have that up. You know, just, it's there. I wanted to do it a couple of years ago when I first got the place.
Mm-hmm.
And I've been a little bit busy.
Yeah, why?
So. But, uh, I told a couple of little guys, some guys come up with a decorating plan, I said, we'll we'll have her ready to go.
So, you say you're putting a Christmas tree?
All it's gonna be is just a pole. Now, if, if I put a hoop and runs, run lights, that's, that'll be the tree.
But, uh, anything that.
That'll be cool.
Yeah.
When there's snow on the ground, and it's dark, anything that lights up.
You are not allowed to cuss on camera, quit it.
I didn't cuss.
You said that four-letter word. Started with an S. Shit.
Did I say? Now, remember?
You said snow.
Of snow. Get her be there for a minute, I thought I was cussing on TV.
Snow, that's a good one.
We haven't had a lot here lately, and every year, they say, oh, well, the Florida's all been, they were really gonna hit this winter. Never know.
I hope it never comes again.
They keep making mother nature make it, there's no guarantees.
We've got like, got so many years up here without getting hammered.
I have some. We're probably too young to remember.
We are.
Blizzard of seventy-eight doing like.
I would've only been one.
One?
It'd have been one.
You had a brother that's about a year younger.
Yeah.
Because of the blizzard of seventy-eight.
Yeah. I heard that was pretty bad.
Yeah, anybody got anything? With Doug, that's where it's still at.
All our equipment is ready for, if we do get hit, right? Or will be. Well, it will, because we'll get it set up. But I mean, it's, as far as, I'm not meaning set up, but I mean, it's all in good working order that are working. We'll know when we hook it up. Okay.
Plow should be, it's gonna have a lot.
I mean, I'm not too worried, but I got a winch on my truck, so. I get myself anywhere, but. Some of the other people, they might have a little trouble. Now, considering plows, have you taken into consideration your new humps? Yes, we have, and we've wondered about those, and we're about to find out.
Uh, you're gonna find out. We did have a speed hump prior to this that did get damaged by the plow. That's why they got, these are a lot more gradual, and so, yeah, that was, that, that was kinda taken into consideration. You shouldn't worry, they did.
We do run, we do run the, uh, the feed on our plow. We don't lay it on the pavement, uh, so that will help us get a little lift before we get to. The blade that we've got out there running now's got the one in the center plus two on the sides. We'll see. And if, if the plow operator's smart enough, he will slow down at the humps and raise the blade a little bit. But, or you're gonna be replacing some hydraulic cylinders.
Yeah.
And I, those are not cheap. No, they're not. And we built the last one six, we built it like six different times before we got rid of it. Oh, wow. I just have the guys get out and shovel the, the humps off first, and.
We'll do that.
I tell you what, you make that phone call.
See how sweet, Missy?
Make that phone call. I'm pretty sure. I might be able to talk one of them into it. I doubt I can talk the other one into it.
All right, nobody's got anything else for Doug? We'll move on to the building commissioner, I'll make a motion, we accept Doug's report, verbal report.
How was second that?
Those have been made proper second to accept Doug's verbal report. All right, I'll post a second. Bob Bullock is gonna be in town tomorrow, he's got some catching up he wanted to get done, I talked to him, uh, a couple of days ago. He said he's off Friday, he'll be down. So if anybody's got anything they need to talk to him about, if you see Bob, you tell him, call me.
I know one person, I said they were waiting on the minute.
There is a few.
Yeah.
There's a few that didn't wait.
There are a few that haven't waited. Yeah, do I need a permit to replace the stuff I did because it got cut off?
Letting that fall into repair.
Is it done? It's done.
Oh, I don't know, what are you talking about?
There you go.
It wasn't new, it was, you weren't putting the bare fixture in.
No.
You just replaced what was broken in the house.
Yeah, it broke. And as a general rule, I think it's, if you, if something costs over five hundred dollars, there's gotta be a permit required, is that always been a standing rule? That's what I've always heard, and so, my thing is, if you're doing your own labor and you're spending your own money, and my business is for kind of money, and labor is free if it's your own labor, so. But Bob will be in town Friday, I'm sure he'll be fascinated looking at all, he'll be over looking at your place and all, looking out there, Doug.
Yeah, I tried to keep him in good graces, I even gave him a portable toilet to save him walking.
I don't know why I jumped so far off.
Well, she did it with the wastewater treatment plant monthly before.
Yeah, nobody else had to.
It's too far for them to walk.
Yeah. Good work.
That one's already done.
Street report there, street commissioner, what you got?
Same thing as the other report. It's like they've been busy, I can't read all the handwriting though.
It's hard, isn't it?
Oh, where?
Did they ever finish up on Maple Street with like what they were doing up there with the?
Well, that's what I was commenting on the other portion, for weeks, we've been trying to get that back. All we got left is foot.
But I mean, with the concrete stuff, you guys were doing up there, that concrete work with the?
Concrete works fine, all we're doing is waiting, we had to let the ground settle a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
So we gotta go scrape this gravel off and then put some, uh, hot bricks in.
Oh, you guys worked on your trailer and everything?
They've been busy.
Yeah, roof over the fan at plant, which.
Exhaust fan on the chemical room.
Oh, okay. List stations are all good now?
Oh, we have a very full climate.
Hopefully suck the grease and stuff out of these list stations.
I generally don't do grease, they, they have to, I want a pH check.
Drop something off.
I have to unload in a different area.
Okay.
And I've had restaurants.
They would expect they would drive, they would drive along, around the east, and then have to pick them up with it.
In the list station?
Soap stuff.
Yeah, uh, we have to take the tanker down from Rogans. And we rinse them out and try to suck it out.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get with you here.
Now, I've got to, I'll be going down physically, second week of November, so.
So I need to do it before that.
Yeah, yeah, and I've, I've got three trailer courts that IDEM is, got them on the hot burner, so I've got to maintain them now.
So why don't we, uh, make sure, give you my number? And you can see it from the spot.
How many list stations?
Five, six, about six. And they're not all, it's not a lot, we won't get a lot of water out of them because we'll suck the water down first.
Sure, yeah.
And then they break off, break it up, so.
Now.
He'll tell us.
The main one down here is usually the doorwork. And the rest of it is.
Do we take it to Richmond or do we take it out there?
To Richmond, yeah, that little plant.
They carry a lot of money.
That don't, uh, they're not taking it.
That's why I asked, yeah.
So they just charge us accordingly now.
Got a question, Doug?
Yeah.
I forgot what, what was that? Yeah, they picked you up in Redford, did you have dropped something off?
Yes. They were coming out that way, I said, right, and it took a, uh, truck out, rocked it off. Took a big red truck.
Or it's the one before there. Or they do?
They put guitars on my big red truck.
Oh, your big red truck, oh.
Yeah.
Oh, I was thinking.
I needed a big red truck, I knew it had out, so I said, get me on your way.
I got you, I was thinking there was something wrong with it.
Well, we did buy some, uh, get some.
Tire.
Okay, a tire. For the trailer, tire for the trailer.
What did you get at Rogans?
Deal for the mower deck?
Yeah, there's, there's.
Oh, I knew they had me a mower thing.
I think.
Okay. I knew they had me some sort of mower park, cause otherwise you wouldn't be going there.
I, I just remembered. A tire.
Yeah, you, you have it. There you go.
But let me call you back. Okay.
Wheel for the mower deck. I am wrote down there, wheel for the mower deck.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else you wanna stress my brain over?
There was.
Everything else sort of stressed my brain over.
What's, uh, moved pipe in back of Sean?
Trying to clean.
Oh, okay, neither moved back there, either.
No, not where. Or somebody messed it all up?
Oh, no, you just, you move stuff and get stuff and.
Fair money.
Got a washing machine or a dryer back here still, is there?
They ever, uh, figure out about the fire extinguishers and stuff, they're all like stacked up in that one area?
They are neat, okay?
Huh?
They are neat, so just specify, Doug, have you ever done anything with those yet?
I was just, I didn't, okay, I was just wondering.
Doug, let's tell those guys, and then maybe they're gonna do something with it, that's, you definitely get a little bit of that.
I didn't underst- I didn't understand why they're all.
Because they get, so here's what happened, they got pulled out of every place that they were to be checked.
Okay.
Never got put back.
Oh. Okay. I was just wondering, cause see, what the heck?
Gonna build a rack, put all those plastic plants on, that'd be nice. See, we could, just wondering if there's any way we don't need to cover it up anyway, but I was saying, I don't know if there's anything we can, like, you know, lean to off the back of that. And even maybe park a vehicle back there, hopefully see, I'll be driving vehicles, also. Maybe, maybe not, I mean, if we, take a route of research to see what it costs to make it roll. If, do I have anything, I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, street sewer task chief report.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second then.
Motion been made, proper second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say the same, motion carried. Unfinished business, Storm Greens, Maple Street, we've just been talking about that, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, they'll have a finished cement up there, ain't they?
Well, it's just, it's just, we got the cement work done.
All the cement works done?
Now it's just putting in hot mix. Scratching out the.
Speed humps on South Main are now, uh.
Don't tell me they're too nice then.
No. Uh, I know it's up there too, I had to begin with. Yeah, but I said, well, my car is a little car, I said, you don't see that little car I drive to work? That little Dodge Avenger, I said, I've never scraped it, but I don't edit it.
Soon as people still hit green on it. I'm like. Oh, that white flatbed flies through there. That guy's gonna end up breaking something.
The loud one?
Yeah. What? I thought you had to have a muffler or something, I don't know. Wow, I did see it goes three levels on the out.
There it is. Here it is coming.
Oh, he goes even faster when he gets, gets out of town.
I, I, he drives from there, obviously, I like the hauls from there.
I didn't know who it was, I just know they, they fly on those springs.
Humps.
Humps, okay. Are you saying that, uh, South Main?
That's what I was gonna say, I, I.
They fly a lot of those humps.
See what kind of asphalt's left up when they pave up there, and then they're gonna dump it somewhere. Probably.
Cause they fly down on those humps.
Yeah, they do. Cause as soon as they get over the tracks, you can hear them hammer down.
Yeah.
We had a cop that lived in town, we just have him work, give him tickets that quick and stuff.
But when they turn off thirty-eight?
I can't do it. I can't.
You can't be all reserved from like.
No, I can't. Obviously, unless we carry one batch.
One'll do.
Yeah, but I, I can't dip that batch. Those speed humps look good. But we definitely.
Once we got it figured out.
Say what?
Are you thinking first block is South Main or second block is?
Well, what you would do is you would, uh, give them about, about the distance of the two that are south of the tracks, but about two, but it's about the same distance.
Yeah, probably between, probably between, uh, Pearl and, uh, what's that next street?
Plum.
Carriage, between that carriage. Okay, whatever this one is, what is this one?
One's plum, no hard streets down there too. Plum and the other one.
Cross.
Cross, cross, that's the street.
Cross, that's the other one.
There it is right here.
Probably go between, right, right there before cross and, and, uh, between cross and plum.
It'd be good, but I think, all right.
Yeah, uh, yeah, cause I could hear it whenever they, they slow down here, and as soon as they get over the tracks, you could hear them hammer it down. Except in the mornings, cause they don't do it in the mornings, cause the bus will be in the area, and they, they don't wanna put it in the back of the bus.
Yeah, but they turn off thirty-eight or cross every week, just a lot down.
Yeah, cause we're, we're definitely gonna meet them.
And, um, there.
Here.
With all the construction, I wish we had one back there at the Baldine, it's not. Because they're using that as a shortcut to avoid the traffic lines.
You mean they're cutting through and coming out of the carriage? Carriage or green?
Yeah. They're coming through there like a herd of turtles.
Turtles.
Turtles, turtles. Okay, I heard that one from my grandmother.
So you're probably the first and second block of South Main first, but when you go to North.
Yeah. Yeah.
Much better than sign to get? I don't know.
Very expensive, but the signs.
The signs aren't so bad, it's shit, it's to give.
Okay, you're more with the shit than me, that's saying?
Probably.
Nice.
But what's it cost to steal them big barrels? I mean, uh, or. Moral, moral. Would you tell them those were ours, you leave them?
Yeah.
I thought they were, they really were, I don't know.
No, they weren't.
Good luck.
There ain't been no leads on that, or on that shoulder.
Rick? Rick? Rick?
Yes.
Have a question before we serve?
Yeah.
Thanks, Scott.
Is there many leads on the burning that shoulder?
Nope.
Not at all?
Nope.
That was an easy one.
Yeah, but fire marshal, I, I don't, I mean, same here.
He pretty much said that he didn't think it would end up going anywhere, the fire marshal.
No, I mean, there's, there's no leads, there's no evidence.
Was somebody riding that person down, that is the only one.
Yeah, cause evidence.
Or did you say the fire marshal said to you, did they, you say, well, somebody flipped a cigarette or something?
Well, no, he said. Defense of somebody.
Yeah.
He said, yeah, if it was an adult, they would say, oh, they would say, well, I may have flipped a cigarette under accidentally, it was accident, or maybe, or maybe not. He basically said it, normally, things like that don't get too far. I hate it for the, uh, community center, I don't know if they're planning on rebuilding or not.
I'd like to see him put a pickleball court back there.
Pickleball, okay.
Or you need the net, chain net.
They take it now.
Yeah, it ended up missing probably.
Yep.
Comes home awards. Fire prevention ordinance.
That's good. Township has passed that.
They've passed it.
As of Tuesday, it has passed.
Now, here's a copy, what do you do with that, you got a copy?
Uh, no.
This is the only copy.
Well, this is the annual.
Okay, this is the only copy that I have, but I think you got a copy someplace.
I knew it. What number would that be anyway, I'm just curious.
She gave it.
I'm sorry. Cause I didn't know when it was gonna be timed, but I don't know when it was first. The important part that he admitted, chapter ninety-four, of course, and then they had questions for Doug. They didn't do anything last night.
Yeah, and I've talked to Doug, uh, about that. Nothing was in there, but it was just about if, only, the only thing I was talking about was if you guys come in and do it for training, if you're somebody of faith.
I think we can make stipulations for them too, as we come in, we say, hey, these are rules, if we're gonna do this, you gotta clean up the aftermath. Matt, something we agree on, you have thirty days to get it done.
That sounds good. Or there's gonna be a front, but.
Or we, if we have to come in and clean this up, there will be a.
Does that gotta be a little bit of orders somewhere?
I don't think so, I think we can do that as verbal between us and them, if they, if they don't agree to it.
Don't burn it down?
Then we don't want it down.
Sounds good to me. Maybe draw up something outside it?
Yeah, we could do that.
When they, you agree to burn it down, if they agree to do that.
If they, they take out.
That sounds good, that way you're.
Cause I don't think that really falls underneath the fire ordinance itself.
Do you have to have the building checked over for asbestos?
Yeah, well, not asbestos, but we have to go through it, if it's, uh, got asbestos shingles on it, then we gotta take them off.
But if you're named a few of them.
But as far as checking the rest of the building out, we don't have to. We do have to get the.
Does, does she already looked it over and everything or?
But after that.
She was part of it last month when we talked about that. She was part of it last month when we talked about that.
Probably didn't tell anyone. Donated. And we we already changed the, like, the distance on the.
I don't know.
County and had a couple.
The what?
Remember before it had that distance issue?
I don't know. This is the original one. I don't wanna say the wrong one.
Strash and break through walls.
This is.
We we should make a mess of the house though.
Protein tanks and people in town having their fires or whatever.
Now you want to make sure this is the right one to send to the publisher.
Uh, I just seen that. Fire shell not be within a hundred feet of a pipeline.
Okay, so we need storage area.
I do pay attention.
Well, we're trying to make sure we got the right one, cause we got an original.
Is that the right one or?
At every.
This is the right one. Uh, double check.
You have to double check.
Item number six or page two.
No, this is the right one.
Ninety-four twenty-two, item six.
Cause we didn't have a whole lot that we needed to change up. Just that one was like, well, wait a minute, if it's five hundred feet, that means nobody in town can have a.
And there's no pipelines.
Some lots wouldn't have to be.
Yeah, this is, this is the correct one.
And there's the other attachments to go to?
Yep.
All that goes.
The attachments are just definitions. So nobody can say, well, it wasn't spelled out clear enough.
It's just an insert, it's not a whole ordinance, right? It's just amendment.
It's an amendment to your, to your fire ordinance, yes.
So this is not the whole entire ordinance, correct?
No, it is. This is it completely. This has got your fireworks in it. Uh, this has got uh.
You gotta say what I got?
What?
None of them are in the file.
I got the one from the attorney. Yep.
But I want them to look at it and make sure and approve it before I send it to the newspaper.
Who's gonna look at it?
I wanna make sure. You can't sign it yet, I understand.
Right, and then you wanna make them look. Are you talking about the attorney or the board?
The board.
On page, page three. Do you have ninety-nine or ninety-four point nine-nine?
Yep.
Okay, and it should be a.
Enforcement fireworks.
Yeah, this is, this is your, your ordinance. That all that's been brought into.
Cause this is your place in the old.
Yes.
So it's not an amendment, it's.
So you incorporated the other one into this one?
Yes.
Cause it's just the opposite on the animal ordinance.
With the help of the attorney.
Well, read the first page of it. It says the man had the top of it to amend that chapter.
Yeah.
In order to amend a portion of chapter ninety-four five, provision of title nine general regulations of the town code, town three four Indiana. Of course, that three, four, five.
Make sure it's.
Make sure.
The lawyer needs to make sure that it's.
Well, if we're gonna make sure we want all we want, we need three of us to make sure. So we'll wait till next uh, next meeting when Kathy's here and then we'll approve it then. But I mean, what we've got now works. We can, is a use of our ordinance, correct?
Got no, there's nothing in it that really works. As far as the way it works. I go out there and I can put the fire out six times, they keep lighting it. There's nothing we can do to stop it. If I go up and tell them, hey, you can't burn trash here. Yeah, there's nothing I can do to stop it. I can walk away and I can relax.
Doesn't this, no.
This does.
Okay, why don't you read the whole thing and see? You wanna read the whole thing to him, Dave?
I don't wanna read it to him.
Well, we've already looked at it.
Well, my thing was, you said ninety-four ninety-nine.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure they were the same. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, and and the only thing that was changed there was that five hundred dollars, correct?
Yeah, well.
I mean, the other was already in the existing fire ordinance.
The uh, the fireworks was and the rest of it is all new.
So this replaces the whole whole ordinance?
That's what I understood when we read it like.
Yes.
Cause the other one was too big and didn't have any teeth or anything.
It did, it it gave us no, I mean.
It was practically missing.
That way we depend on effect and.
It's been the same complaints with everybody, sure.
So what you're saying is you'd rather us not wait till next month?
Yeah, I would. Especially coming up on fall. I've already put out several fires in town.
I'll entertain the motion.
I'll say.
I said, I'll entertain the motion.
I make a motion, we go ahead and go forward with it myself. Cause we've looked it over and everything and we've already, he's already went back and made the changes. And it's already been through the attorneys, correct?
Five hundred dollars worth.
It's been through township attorneys and your attorneys.
Okay, so I make a motion to go ahead and accept it.
Alright, I'll say the motion. Motion's been made proper second to accept the fire orders and uh approve it.
For publication.
For publication.
And then when he comes back after all that, then you guys have to adopt it, right? You can sign it.
I'll make a motion, we adopt it after it all comes out. We'll do that later. Set some fire on this.
For publication.
Okay, very good. Passed. Good. Okay. Animal ordinance. Let's go ahead and prove that to whoever here, why not? You good with it?
You can get.
What was the uh, they've already looked at this too, right Adam, then?
This is whatever.
This is just an amendment. This is an insert to the, to the.
And.
That's why I was asking about that.
And then I. Was it a? There was a question as to if this should say that this was just an insert or just an amendment. And then I got a reply from uh Adam's office. They checked with Adam in apology called about uh stated that the rest of the ordinance is remaining unchanged. Uh, Adam said he doesn't want to get into that finances or he said the amendment uh what is changing. So I just started to have that language there.
Okay, so he, he said it was good as, as is?
As an amendment.
That's what you said, pass it down.
As an amendment, not as a, a complete ordinance, correct?
That's, that's where I began. My question. Cause you said something the other day about.
I was there when you called.
Yeah.
Do you have a problem with animals in the town? Which?
They want chickens.
Chickens. They want chickens.
They want chickens.
And cats, they want more cats.
They want chickens.
They want chickens, yeah. Chickens eat cats or cats eat chickens.
So he said, so I'm guessing this is all good then? This is what I'm understanding.
As a, an amendment.
To the existing one.
You slide this into the, and then it takes part of one or the other.
To allow chickens or?
Yes. It looks like he just.
Six.
Just made it fancier.
Exactly.
Is this like for, for each projects and stuff like that?
We kinda got.
No, actually they.
Is this someone verbatim?
Eggs and teach their kids how to uh, six chickens.
Change a couple words here and there.
Uh, they've gotta be inspected, the, the coop that they're made. Some of them have to inspected to make sure it's uh, uh, go or keep them in and it can't be uh. Okay, you can take a pick at this if you'd like.
He need to up there like proof for you. There is a few changes.
Realize the word.
Like he changed certain words.
So don't tell me I get a new title as chicken.
Uh.
If you wanted, I do not want him to put Ron in there.
You're going to this whole thing, that's fine.
No, I think we get a volunteer from the town that somebody had chickens here for four years, let him look at it.
Yeah.
Uh, his chickens are in good, yep. And I even brought that up to him at the meeting. Was it last month that we had citizens here?
That was it.
I'm sorry.
Was it last month we had the citizens here from South Main that had chickens? I was thinking they was here because I had said something then that he would be the ideal person to come out and make sure it's a hen. So it looks like everything looks good.
So your amendment's a ninety point O two?
Yeah. Yeah, this is good.
Exactly. But to come up with. Permit, it doesn't actually have to be a physical thing, right? It just had, we have to have a record of it.
Permit, what do you mean?
For the permit to have the chickens.
Twenty-five dollars for you're gonna have to have a, give them something that have a receipt on it.
Who's gonna give them a permit? Where do you wanna get it? Here?
Well, where do they get everything else at?
It's where they're gonna pay.
Still not enough to worry about somebody in passing if we don't have enough money to have. So, do we wait on Kathy?
We probably should.
I'll make a motion, we wait on Kathy.
That's second best.
Was been made proper second to approve the animal ordinance at the next meeting, then all three board members.
Okay, wait on Kathy. Uh, you made a motion right on Kathy to uh chicken, when Scott said it.
Yeah, just put, put all the boards here. There's no, there's no major hurry on that. Nobody else is getting chickens yet anyway. And I'll guarantee you.
My question is, you're saying that you're, you're changing so that people can have chickens?
Right.
But. So once that passes. You have to get a permit to have your chickens?
One time permit.
Just so whether who's got the chickens.
And the permit, let's just say you own a couple houses here in town, you're renting them. Permit's gotta go through you as an homeowner instead of the renter.
And no roosters?
No roosters. And if it, if the way the ordinance reads, if there is a, cause I have read it, read it, believe me or not. If there is a rooster and, and, and I could understand that first, they said, well, sometimes you just don't know, it takes a little bit. And you say, oh no, that's a rooster. Well, then seven days, that rooster's gotta be gone if it starts to grow. That's in the ordinance.
Yeah. Cause we know you're not gonna build no right away necessarily. I want you to find out.
And you're limited to six chickens and you have to have an approved shed form.
Not a shed, but a enclosure, yeah.
enclosure.
That's enough to make an omelet.
That's enough to make an omelet.
I figure it gives you, if, if all of them lay, you get like a half dozen eggs.
Cause you can make a, a pretty good omelet out of that.
What, is it enough where they can sell eggs?
Yes.
Yeah, they can.
Cause it's not, it's not, it's not for commercial. It's just so people can have it for themselves.
Sure. This first kind of delight about four or five years ago, lady over here on Pearl had some chickens. Well, she had a guy that rented a house next to her and he uh made a formal complaint about her having chickens. So we said, okay, it says in the ordinance, no chickens, so your chickens have to go. But we stretched it out about ninety days. Because the only issue was, and I told her in a meeting, that, that the only problem we found your neighbor was a hole. Yeah. Complained about it, filed a complaint, therefore we had to pull the ordinance out and say, no, you can't have them. Yeah, but if somebody makes a formal complaint on something, we have an ordinance, we have to enforce that ordinance.
I, what I'm looking at is if you're gonna publish that you're changing an ordinance. Everybody's allowed to have chickens, you know?
If they do it the right way, right.
Well. Why twenty-five dollars? Just say, hey. We, we put it in the paper.
I tried that. Trust me. I said, I started off, or it was, started off with a no fee permit.
Sure.
Just so we know who had them.
So who complained about that?
Come up that it needed to be a twenty-five dollar permit.
So. Why? Why? Why does it cost to live in this town and enjoy your six chickens?
Because it is a uh privilege, not a right, I guess. I mean, that's what I'm trying to take out. No, I didn't want the permit myself.
Why don't you?
But that's okay, it was a twenty-five dollars. The permit, we should have had a permit.
The permit we want, but.
So we know who's got.
But in order to make sure we got the.
Basically, you walk down the street and say, it's a chicken.
Well, you shouldn't be able to walk down a street and see him. That's another thing that's in the ordinance. They can't be run out in front of the house and they can't distract the neighbor's property.
This chicken.
It's gonna, it's gonna cost.
Not me, no.
He lives in the country, he's got chickens just running everywhere. You don't even have to have a cage for years if you decided to have it.
My Jack Russells would eat them though.
They gotta eat too.
You know, I, it's just, I just hate fees for everything. If we're gonna make it a rule, okay, you published the rule and didn't cost anybody anything. Hey, you passed it. If you don't like it, come to the town, complain about it, and I guess I'll complain about a twenty-five dollar fee that I, I'm, I don't care.
And here's the thing.
I guess I do.
Here's the thing, let's just say, somebody said, well, I'm not gonna pay that fee, but I'm gonna get me some chickens anyway. And they've got six chickens, well, we're gonna fine them twenty-five dollars for having them without a permit and then make them pay twenty-five dollars for the permit. That's the way the ordinance reads. Hey, I, don't get me wrong, I was the first one to say, I brought up a free permit just so we know who's got them.
And that's why I wrote it the first time.
Oh, no, yeah, that's the way we read it the first time.
Can I?
Oh, yeah.
Make a recommendation that we.
Sure.
Find somebody that's been in the military, preferably a colonel and maybe with the last name of Sanders.
First name Harland.
And the, the chicken police.
Not my boat.
We can find them, if we can find them.
I gotta bring comedy in.
Oh, yeah. We trying to have a little bit of here. That's why these guys might come to our meeting.
We're worried about our ratings.
Not dangerous. Yeah, I, you know, I agree. Part, and then I said, well, okay, five dollars, owners, it's gotta be twenty-five dollars, show seriousness.
Yeah.
So.
Hey, we got her down to a one-time fee. I think she wanted an annual.
Yeah.
An annual fee.
You're a kid.
Well, and, and I think people think the cost of living is gonna be so high, I don't know if they think they're gonna be paying ten dollars a dozen eggs. I don't eat eggs if they're ten dollars a dozen.
I'll eat chicken.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
When they got out of the cage.
One lady come in here and she said, you know the price of eggs? I said, yes, ma'am, I go to the grocery store. And she said, I want chickens. I said, well, uh, ordinance would have to be changed, you know, that's up to council. And I said, well, how about your chicken coop? Oh, I can get one for seventeen hundred dollars. I didn't say, but I thought you can buy a lot of eggs for seventeen dollars. But she was going home and she wanted chickens, you know? I said, well, it's up to council, they have to change your.
She's gonna get her chickens. Once she pays her twenty-five.
But she can get a coop for seventeen hundred dollars. I thought, my gosh, that's expensive.
I could build her one cheaper than that.
And that's gonna open up a job for somebody where they can make a little bit of money going around saying, hey, I'm a chicken peeling builder.
Like, hey.
You have dairy.
You make dairy some money.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you gotta have a pastor, as a man, you can't have them just one lips.
Yeah.
And we go on the hunt for.
Don't change. Churches might step in.
Well, Colonel Sanders, my grandmother, bless her, already been dead for a long time. She was at a nursing home and went to visit her. My bro, oldest brother had remarried his third wife. Or married his third wife, he didn't remarried. But uh, he said something, she asked him, she said, good lord, how many you gonna have? And he said, I don't know, I'm still young. She said, well, I was gonna marry Harland and uh SOB died on. Well, I say she was in a nursing home, she was just. Well, I say she was in a nursing home. She was just, yeah, she was gonna marry Harland Sanders and die. So she was all upset. I see the humor.
She was processing it wrong, was she?
Alright, so we're gonna wait for the animal ordinance for Kathy. And, uh, I'm gonna make a little note here. Uh, revisit.
Search out the military.
Twenty-five dollars. Permit fee.
Alright, I can tell you right now, she's not gonna go for that.
Well, here's the thing. If there's a board of three, like I brought up earlier, and it, you know, that's why there's three people.
Yeah.
Cause if you got two and one, then the two win. If you got one and two, the two still win.
And you got some, uh, something from a citizen too.
Yeah, it's, it's actually two, two, two comments from citizens on that fee. Cause he's saying, no, the other, the other one being, uh, Brittany.
I just figured.
They didn't care.
You know.
They said to them.
Reading the rules is good enough.
Yeah.
It shouldn't cost you twenty-five bucks.
Yeah.
The whole purpose behind it is just to know where you're at and what you got. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Why does, why, like I say, I was, I wasn't forced to.
Come in, pay your light bill. Hey, I got four chickens today. You know? Cool.
Now, we are putting in that every pet you have is ten dollars a month. If you got a dog that's over thirty pounds, it's ten dollars. Twenty for you monthly.
I don't think we'd be able to enforce most of them pet ordinances.
Well, and that, that's the thing. Any ordinance that's written anywhere, it's not enforced until someone comes at the board with a formal complaint. Then we have to pull the ordinance out and say, if it says no, then the answer is no. Cut, cut dry.
That's, that's just like this thing right here. I don't chase smoke, you know, until someone calls in and says, hey, we've got some, I'm not going out after. You know, call nine-one-one and say, hey, there's a problem. Somebody's burning this. It's filling my house up. We go.
Right.
You know, and then we've got an ordinance when we walk up to their front porch and they're like, why are you here? You're burning literally. Here's the ordinance.
Now recreational fire doesn't count?
Doesn't count.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a size limit, uh.
Yeah, ten by ten by ten.
Yeah, I mean, you can have a pretty big fire.
Small house down in.
I know.
As long as you got, as long as you got a hot dog or a marshmallow.
You don't have to have it enclosed, right?
No, clean wood. You do have to have something there in case it were to get away from you.
You don't want it.
Whatever. That's smart.
Treat it.
Yes. Practice safety. Yeah.
I probably shouldn't say this, uh, when you write a ordinance or any rule, you have to write it to the lowest level of someone's thinking. Should I read, I'll read that one.
You have to make it, you don't want it foolproof. You have to make it idiot proof.
That's pretty good. That's pretty good.
Exactly. He's a citizen. He can get away with it.
I swear. That's right.
I get away with it. Lost.
He says it with a smile on his face.
Trash country, uh, November.
November, okay.
If we had warrants, we could approve them.
Right here we are.
I knew you had them. I knew you had them.
Move a really fancy folder from this bit.
Well, that's, uh. It's the trash papers.
Very much recycled.
Recycled supplies.
Yeah.
Is our rate's gonna go up?
Uh, probably, probably. Be honest with you. What a lot of people don't understand, right now, we charge town people ten dollars.
Ten dollars.
And we're, right now, we're paying twelve seventy-five.
Yeah, and we have to, what I call feed it.
Yeah, we got to feed it.
We paid.
Which?
The town still puts three or four thousand dollars a year into it.
But when we first had it, it was free. No one had to pay. But that's back before we had a sewer plant and. So, uh, probably, I don't wanna say yeah, but, uh, uh, I know that if it's like the sewer, to, to raise a sewer, what people don't understand is you have to go through a, uh, a consultant, a rate consulting firm. They have to say, I'll give you an example. When we had to raise a sewer, the sewer plant about ten, it's been ten years ago. We talked about that time. This would be good three to five years. So we've done well. Doug's. So. We said, okay, uh, five to ten years, but, or three to five years, but we had to pay thirty-five hundred dollars. Cause I said, okay, let's get, we'll raise it three dollars this year, three dollars, three dollars over three years for nine dollars total at the end of three years. You can't do that. You have to go through a rate consultant. Well, they decided for thirty-five hundred dollars that we can raise three dollars a year over three years, nine dollars at the end of three years. But it took us a little over a year on the difference to get the thirty-five hundred dollars back that we had paid the rate consultant.
So keep that information so that in the future, you don't have to go to the consultant. We did it before. You can do it again.
You have to.
You have to. Yeah. We could crunch numbers.
At the government.
Oh, I see.
This lady down here could crunch your numbers.
I'm, I'm a big number cruncher.
Uh, but it, uh, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, and it is.
It's because they want their cut of the pie.
Everybody got a hand now for a piece of the pie. I'll make a motion. We approve the warrants. Second best. Motion been made proper second to approve warrants. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion carried. Thank you. I'll leave and sign this.
You'd have probably been out of here if it wasn't for me.
Do I?
You'd have probably been out of here by now.
Well, sometimes we hang after ten, ten-thirty, eleven o'clock. We have a brownie party afterwards and everything. You do, uh, Wes can, uh, tell you about this. You need to be here on the December meeting. We have food, peanut butter candy, macaroni.
You make candy?
All kinds of stuff. Damn.
I have to bring my brisket.
Oh, good. Oh, good. Yeah, I like that.
Cause it bugs me whenever you think you got a opening. It usually.
It changes big time.
I get it. I know the feel. Even if you're, you know, a day ahead, and say, hey, tomorrow maybe, we can break that way.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody have anything they'd like to bring before the board before we adjourn the meeting? Nita?
That's true. That's you.
No, thanks, Senator.
Young lady, would you like? Alright, I'll make a motion. We adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made proper second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.